Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By roll call, see that all council members are present with the exception of Council Member Leach and Council Member Hatch, or excuse this evening. To begin this evening's meeting, we'd like to pause for a minute and a half, 30 seconds, for each of the Rawlings children that were lost this past Thursday. So if you just join with us in silent prayer as we meditate for a minute and a half. Thank you. This time would ask Vice Mayor if he would give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll lead us in that. Those who'd like to join with us in prayer, if you'd please stand.
Our Father, we come to you with heavy hearts tonight. We just ask that you be of the Rawlings family with their loss. And we just ask you comfort them and guide them, show them your grace and your mercy and your love for them. We ask, Father, that you would guide the people to the right place to find Willa so she can be rescued and they can have closure. We just ask you guide and direct everybody that's been helping there, that their love for the Rawlings will be shown in a way that they've never shown before. With heavy hearts, Lord, we just ask that you just be with them, guide them and direct them, and help them. Or we also ask you to be with the Tenny family, there's a loss of Randy Tenny this week. Randy Tenny was a mayor of Cholo, councilman of Cholo, ran a restaurant on a motel, Little League, and many other things, Fire Board, many other things in the city of Cholo. His name will be all over the different things in town. People will be able to see his face on everything that's started in the city of Cholo. And we just ask that you comfort his family and his wife and children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, to do and to bring the grace and the mercy that only you can have. And, Lord, we just ask that you guide and direct each one of us tonight to do the things that you want us to do for the city of Cholo. We ask that you protect and bring home every person that's out there protecting this United States from murder. We ask this in your precious name. Amen.
He's joining me at the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that prayer, Vice Mayor. On behalf of the city, we just wish and share our condolences to the Rawlings family to ask for their comfort to Daniel, to Blake, to Jay, to Jamie, to Bill and Trudy, the Rawlings family. And I know there's family on the other side, but I don't know their names as well as I know the Rawlings is that live here in Cholo. I want to thank all the citizens throughout the White Mountains, throughout the state of Arizona, who rendered aid in trying to find the Willa and finding the other two. It's something special to see a community come together and work so hard. People in the water, people trudging, going without sleep, doing everything that they can to try to help somebody. It is something special to live in a community where people care for one another. And I just want to thank all those who have offered prayers, who have offered comfort, who have performed service, and deep gratitude. My heart goes out to the Randy Tenny family. Randy was on the city council from 1984 to 1988. He was a former mayor from 1986 to 1988. And many of the things the Tenny family has, a great history in our community and things that they've done, and a great family that's also suffering for loss. You know what happens at a time where we give thanks? We are thankful to be in this community. We are thankful that we can come together. And it's also a transition that we celebrated a great community fast of coming together and great tribute as we turn towards the Savior, towards the Christmas season. May our hearts still be joy, that life is good, God is good, God is great, and he knows all things. And may we hold our head high and be proud to be an American and proud to be part of this community. My blessing that you will and they will survive, they will be stronger, they'll be great people. And to those people who want to be hurtful, on Facebook, shame on you. Until you've searched, until you've looked, until you've wrapped your arms around one of those grieving husbands or fathers and stood in his place or stood next to him and helped him find his daughter, you have no right to criticize. May your hearts change, may they be softened, and may you learn to hold your tongue just a little bit, or your fingers in the case of Facebook. Challenge you to be better, do better. Thank you. At this time, we have a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not scheduled on the agenda, may do so at this time. Seeing nobody move, the call to the public. Come back to special events where we have a presentation on the community outreach by Northland Pioneer College. Mr. Vest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. First, let me say that the Rawlings family was part of the NPC community as well. With that in mind, I want to thank you for the words you just expressed. I think they were well said and needed, both. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that said, I know it's hard to transition to the work of the city. I have with me tonight Betsy Wilson, who is the Director of the College Foundation, NPC Friends and Family, and who also helps lead the outreach effort for the college. I did want to introduce to all of you, although to some of you I know he doesn't need an introduction, our new board member for District Four, which includes the city of Cholo, and that's Mr. Everett Robinson, who's with us this evening. And I'll also give a little bit of time, I'll try to keep this short, but I'll give a little bit of time at the end, to the other gentleman I have with me this evening. That's Mr. Richard Strickland. Mr. Strickland is the construction manager for the significant construction project that's going to be going on for the next few years at our campus here in Cholo. Okay? So with that said, I came to the city council earlier this year, as you know, to inform you that we were going to, over the next few years, be going through a major construction work at our campus here. Our district governing board has set aside $20 million from our capital fund to do both new construction and remediation of existing buildings on the Cholo campus. And I came back tonight to give you a short update on where we are in that process, and also to allow Mr. Strickland to briefly introduce himself to the city council. He'll be taking the lead as we work with the city and work with Planning and Zoning Board in the coming years. Okay? So here's where we are briefly on the project. Over the last few months, we went through a RFP process to identify an architectural firm to do the first step of what will be a two-step process. The first step is to update the college's master facility plan, not just for the Cholo campus, that's the primary focus right now, but for all campuses and centers. That master facility plan is seven years old, and like all seven-year-old plans, it's out of date. The next step will be to move from that broad planning process to actually beginning the design and construction of the facilities at the campus here in Cholo. So where we are right now is we have hired SPS Plus Architects, who has a long history of working in the White Mountains, both for Northland Pioneer and other entities in this area. They are conducting a series of workshops and interviews at all of our locations. We've done a number of those at our campus in Cholo to update our master facility plan and identify what the exact needs are for the construction projects here in Cholo and at our other locations. That will be going on for the next few months. They will then present that plan to our district governing board for acceptance and adoption. And at that point, the board will need to decide how they want to move forward with the actual construction at White Mountain. Just a quick recap for you on what that construction will look like. We have an existing learning center at the White Mountain campus that needs some significant remediation, as you know. All over the area, we have to deal with water moving through different kinds of soil, and our campus in Cholo is no exception to that. And our existing learning center sits on two very different types of soil, and as a result, part of the building moves faster than another part of the building. And so we're going to need to address that. As we address that, we're going to take the opportunity to rebuild that facility for use by our nursing and allied health programs, who have really outgrown their existing facility. We have requests from entities in the area to expand our nursing program here. We'd certainly like to do that. We are not capable of doing that in our existing facilities. So in order to expand opportunities for students in the area, we're first going to have to expand our facility. Now, what will go along with that is building a new general education facility that we hope will be a flagship general education facility for our other locations as well, and really a model for what our educational process for students should look like in the future. And that will be built in existing space in the center of the camp. And then, third, we currently, as you may know, have some of our workforce development programs, our direct employment programs like welding and automotive scattered around in places like the industrial park in the city. We want to bring those, all of those programs onto campus so that those students have the same access to student support opportunities and other classes that the students already on the campus in Cholo have. So we'll be building a skill center, very similar to the skill center we built a few years ago on our Holbrook campus, there on the existing space at the White Mountain camp. And then, should the remaining money permit, what we'd like to do is take the existing Goldwater Building, which some of you may remember is the old hospital in Cholo, and turn that into the front door of the camp. Right now, to get to our front office and to get to a lot of our student services activities, you have to know to drive to the backside of the campus off of Whipple to do that. We want to move all of that onto the front of camp. So just to remind you, those are the long-term plans for this facility. We are kind of on target, on schedule, in that we are moving through that initial phase right now of a broad design, a broad facility planning process. We look to build the skill center first, and we hope to be able to build the new general education facility at the same time or shortly after the skill center. Then we'll begin remediation of that facility. We have to do it in that order because we're going to need to move everybody out of the existing learning center into the new general education facility so that we can do the remediation. So we hope by doing the process and this phased series of steps, we'll minimize the impact on students on the campus. Okay? With that said, I'd like to turn time over briefly to Mr. Strickland so he can introduce himself to you as a city council, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strickland?
Being new to your area right now, I would like to say thank you for this opportunity to meet the city council. I am a native of Arizona. I was born in Miami, and I was raised in a logging camp called Maverick on the Fort Apache Indian Reservation, and graduated high school in Springville. Relocated to Southern California, for the past 40 years, I've worked in commercial construction, been an owner's rep. I've done K through 12 schools, higher education. I've worked in the entertainment business. I have worked in Las Vegas extensively with the Benyans family during the old horseshoe days. And the one thing that I've learned, it doesn't matter where you've been or where you go, every area, every job has its own challenges, and all that experience I just told you is out the window because I've got to start all over again. But to me, it's good to be home. Northland Pioneer College, to me, is one of the most beautiful campuses that I've worked on. And our transparency that we're going to have with you during the construction, David Hush and myself will be working together to coordinate with you so that you know what we're doing, we know what you expect of us, and that you don't have to make phone calls to Mr. Vest saying that we're not playing well with our neighbors because we really want to be good neighbors with you. We want to be your shining star up there, and that campus is a good start. When people say NPC, we want them to think Cholo. And that's just not me. Our architects are on board with this, and they're doing a real good job of bringing it all together on how we're going to treat the environment, and how we're going to treat the campus, and how we're going to represent ourselves to you guys. So with that said, and I know you're busy, I'm glad to be home. I am going to relocate to Cholo. This is where me and my wife want to retire at, and I'm glad to be a part of this. We might not get along all the time, but I promise you, we will be professional, and we will try our best to make everybody happy. Thank you for this opportunity, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
I just have one question. Recently, you had your accreditation down there at Holbrook. How can you report on that at all, a little bit briefly, or?
Well, we felt like it went very well. We're cautioned, and we have to caution ourselves not to read too much into the conversations that we have at the team while they're here. We expect a draft report of the visit probably before Christmas, and that will give us an opportunity to do what's called corrections of fact if they make, you know, any kind of factual errors. After that, the report is turned over to the Higher Learning Commission Central Office, basically their central council, which is based out of Chicago, and it may be three to five months before we hear anything firm. So I don't want to say anything more than that because I don't want to give people the impression that, you know, everything went A-level, B-level, whatever. We won't really know that until we get the final report. But for the visit itself, it went very well. It went very much as we expected, and I think the team had a good visit and loved the area.
That's great. Great. Thank you. Any other questions at council? We appreciate what you do in our community and what you're going to do building some more campus here. It's fantastic. Be careful with that Goldwater building, okay?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, we have a presentation of our annual report of our Cholo Historical Center. Ms. Claire Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members and city staff. As always, it's a pleasure to be here to present our annual progress report to you and the citizens that are watching us on TV. Our 2019 season was an outstanding year, again, with some months seeing a steady stream of visitors, yet other months, our visitor counts were just out the door. They were above and beyond the previous year. So this year, we had set, the Board of Directors had set a goal of 5,000 visitors to come through the museum doors, and I'm very happy to report that we met that goal and above. So as of today, our visitor count is 5,286 visitors. That's up 450 from last year. Though we continue to show a steady growth here at the museum. Our volunteer hours, as many of you know, the museum is staffed primarily by volunteers. So our volunteer hours are 2,293. That's up 104 hours from last year. We had 58 items a session. Those are donations and/or items that the community members have brought in, and they're accounted for and put on display or used for educational purposes in the museum. And of the 5,286 visitors, 750 of those are schoolchildren. We continue to have our Heritage Days in the spring and in the fall, and various schools throughout the year. And this past year, we had a wonderful surprise, the Hopi Day School from the Sanders area. They made an entire day of coming to Cholo. They bussed their children over, and, pardon me, the museum was one of the key stops for them to come in and to view what we have on display. Many of the children were very happy to see items of their heritage at our museum and very excited to go home and tell their parents and grandparents that those items were at the museum. So we will continue to reach out to our rural school districts in Navajo County to encourage them to have the day-long field trips, not only to the museum but to Cholo itself, because the children then went to the swimming pool. They had a day out lunch date at the park, and so that just makes for a very fun day for those rural communities that don't have a lot of the amenities that Cholo has. Okay, let's see, the museum, the building, our dear old building. We completed several projects this year. The last of the window screens that are on the outside of the building, the large windows, we completed that project. We've worked on that for the last three years. Deborah Austin provided the photograph of Julian Clark statue, and that is on the West Side building, and it was installed by Allegra Printing. So with those window screens, it helps keep the UV ray out of the building and protect the items that are inside, because those windows that are in that building are not of, well, they just don't have the protection that's required for those historical items. We upgraded three of the bathrooms in the museum. We painted. We got new toilets installed, thanks to the city employees for their assistance. The Joanne Finney Hatch Library and the Ranchers Hall of Fame will have new carpeting as of next week. We worked on six existing exhibit rooms over the course of last winter and throughout this past year, or this past season, to do a very deep clean. And when we deep clean, it's very intense. It's that white glove cleaning kind of thing, but it's very serious because you're dealing with the precious items that are in there, and there's certain things that you can and cannot do to make sure everything stays in line. So we accomplished six rooms of the 17 that we have. Our building did experience severe water leaks in the Silver Creek Railroaders' Work Room. That's on the east side of the building. The flooring had to be replaced. We had to seal up the, after it was thoroughly cleaned, the flooring was down, then it had to be sealed to prevent further growth of mold growing on the walls. So the room was completely redone. And the reason for that severe leak is that particular room and the train room sits on that east side of the building, and the water drain that comes off of the roof, it freezes, and it does not enable the water to disperse off at the top of that roof very well. And so when it did break loose, it really broke loose, and a lot of the water seeped up underneath the floor itself, and that is just, it's just part of the building, the way the building is constructed into the earth itself. So with that being said, we overcame that and got that corrected. Onto a positive note, we were very pleased to announce a partnership with the White Mountain Gym and Mineral Club. Their organization has a permanent exhibit in the Cholo Room featuring minerals from Arizona, and it is an exceptional teaching tool for our visitors. Our European visitors absolutely love it, and the children from the schools, they really enjoy it. So many of our European visitors don't realize that we sit right on top of volcanic field, and they're quite amazed by that. They think of Arizona as a very large desert consisting of hactus and sand, which we know is not at all the truth. But anyway, so we're very happy to have them on board. We also, this year, have partnered with Navajo County's webmaster, Alicia Deeds, and we provide historical information featuring Navajo County on their weekly webpage. It's not every week, but there are several weeks that the museum has provided that information for that website. The Silver Creek Railroaders applied for and were granted their fifth grant from the Arizona Historical Society. They were awarded $870 for their future building of the last train to Maverick. So we are very excited and happy that that can continue. And I'd like to say, as the city is approaching its 150th year celebration, it's hard to believe, the 2020 season will mark the museum's 25th anniversary. So the museum Board of Directors and staff were compiling a commemorative calendar with historical photos, stories, and recipes to commemorate our 25th anniversary. In April, the Board of Directors will hold their election. So if there's any members in the community that would like to sit on the Cholo Museum Board, we invite you to stop by the museum or give us a call, 532-7115. That information can be passed on to the President of the Board, Bob Schamosko. And the museum continues to be in good standing with the Arizona Corporation Commission, Arizona Historical Society, and Navajo County Library and Museum Code of Ethics. We base our programs with those three entities in mind. So in closing, on behalf of the Board of Directors, museum staff, and myself, we're grateful for the assistance, as always, that we receive in various capacities from the city of Cholo, Navajo County, and our museum visitors. Are there any questions that I could answer for you?
I think you did a great job, and I want to thank you for all you do for the museum and everything else. It's one of the top notch ones up here, so definitely thank you and your board for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You guys do a fantastic job for the community our size, but you've preserved a lot of our history.
Yes, we have. And Mayor Seymour, if I may indulge just for one minute, with our current circumstance with the Rawlings family, it brought to my mind of your great-grandmother, Ms. Rogers, when she walked from Taylor-Sumway area to Linden to help Ms. Pierce birth your mother, and she was tragically lost. And the outpouring of love from the community decades and decades ago is the very same thing that's happening today. We had ranchers butchered bees that were going to feed their families for that winter, but they had to feed the help of all of the White Mountain communities that came together to find your great-grandmother, and that's what we do. So, and we'll continue to do that forever, I'm quite sure of it. So, anyway, thank you. Happy Merry Christmas and a blessed New Year.
Next item, we have Mr. Johnson with our presentation of our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year 2019. And we'll let you introduce Representative here from Kenton Burdick. And we'll let you introduce representative here from Kenton Burdick.
Evening, mayor and council members. Uh, we do have Robin Sibley, she was the audit manager on our audit this year. She's been on the audit the last two years physically here um onsite with us for the field audit. And um, she's got a PowerPoint presentation prepared, and there are some references to the actual CAFR in that presentation, so if you don't have a hard copy and you want to follow along, I've got a hard copy here, I believe it was emailed as well, so. And then if you have any questions as she's working through the presentation, feel free to ask. But we appreciate her driving up tonight to speak with the council and give the presentation. So I'll turn the time to Robin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of council. As Justin said, my name is Robin Sibley, and I'm with Kenton Burdick. We're the auditors for the city of Sholo. And we were out here in September performing the audit. And my purpose here tonight is to present the results of our audit. Um, so our, the results of our audit is that we had an unmodified opinion or basically a clean opinion. And our report on the internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, we did not find any material weaknesses. And we have reported one significant deficiency, which we will um address in a in a minute. Our report on state compliance was that we did not find any material or reportable findings. And this year, we conducted a single audit, which is basically the result of um when a city or town receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, they're required to have a single audit over those federal grant monies. And um, because the city exceeded that, um, the grant monies this year, which was basically due to the airport rehab runway improvement that was done. Uh, that was federal money, and so we did perform a single audit over that particular program. And the result of that single audit was that we also had an unmodified or clean opinion, and we did not have any findings related to that single audit. So our findings and recommendations is a separate letter that hopefully each of you have received. And we um, we did not have any material weaknesses, and we did not find any um compliance findings. We had one significant deficiency, which is, was basically year-end accounting adjustments. And just to let you know, this is a typical finding that we have in most cities. Um, our audit standards require that whenever we have audit adjustments that we find when we come out to perform the audit, we're required to have a um, a finding on that, depending on the significance of the the audit adjustment. So um, and that that's basically what the finding was this year, which actually is um, is commendable to only have that one finding. Um, you know, we audited a few cities around um the area, and just so you are aware that that is good, to just have that the one finding. So we're now going to go over some of the general financial highlights of the government as a whole. And so this includes both your governmental activities as well as your business-type activities. And the total net position at the end of the fiscal year, June thirty, twenty nineteen, was a hundred and sixty-one million dollars, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand and sixty-nine. Uh, so very healthy um net position overall. This was an increase from the previous year of eight point four million. And usually you you look for whether the net position of a of a city is um improving or decreasing, and that tells you the financial health of the city. And so um, the city is doing very well. It increased eight point four million this last year. And six point nine million of that increase came from your governmental activities, and one point five million came from your business-type activities. Uh, total revenues for the year from all sources was twenty-seven point five million, and the cost of all programs was twenty-nine million for this last fiscal year. We, this is a, one of the statements in the um comprehensive annual financial statements that you'll find. It's the statement of activities, and we just wanted to call this particular statement to your attention because if you look at the details of the statement, it gives some good information. Um, this, if you look at this statement, it shows you the the governmental activities, and it also shows down below the business-type activities to your left. And then as you move over to the right, you see the expenses for the for the year related to those activities. And as you continue moving to the right, it then shows you the type of revenues in those activities. And so it it gives some good information. It it shows you revenues from charges for services. It shows you revenues from particular grants that were received throughout the year. So we just like to call that statement to your uh attention. The that this next slide is a continuation of that same statement, the statement of activities. Again, this is for total government, governmental activities as well as business-type activities. And this, the the continuation of this um statement is showing you all the the other general revenues that the that the city receives. So, and that would include, most significantly are the the sales taxes that this the city receives during the year. So we wanted to just go over some financial highlights with your capital assets and debt overall. In the governmental funds, your capital assets increased by one point nine million. Um, your significant additions this year were the airport runway rehabilitation that was, that cost two point five million approximately. And also you had some various road improvements on McNeil, Eighth Street, and Thornton, which totaled about one point one million for this last year. And there were no significant deletions. In your business-type funds, not quite as much capital asset activity. It decreased by eight hundred and two thousand, which was basically a result of depreciation taken during the year. You did have sewer improvement, the most significant one was um this Sierra Vista Sewer Improvement for five hundred and fifty thousand. And again, there were no significant deletions this last year. In the government debt, it had, it decreased by two million this year, which was basically um due to your annual debt service payments that were required. And in the utility fund, also had a decrease of debt by seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which was also a result of annual debt service payments. We just wanted to make note that um the CFD District Bond Series two thousand and seven and also the bond two thousand and eleven, as well as the GATA bond um two thousand and eight, were all paid off this last fiscal year. And for next fiscal year twenty, you can expect some um annual debt service payments totaling about one, one point eight million, which is less than last year because of those um previous debts I mentioned that were paid off. So now we're going to move on to individual fund activity. What we just previously discussed was the government as a whole, and now we're going to move into individual fund activity. And this is the the general fund. And the financial highlights we're going to discuss here in the general fund increased from last year. Last year was ten point five million, and this year it increased eleven, approximately eleven point nine million at the end of the year. And most of that eleven point nine million of fund balance is on a signed uh fund balance, which is, makes up approximately eleven point seven million of the total uh fund balance at the end of the year. The general fund reported revenues in excess of expenditures of one point three million. And the revenues in the general fund were greater than the final budget by one point five million, and expenditures in the general fund were less than the final budget by five point six million. We wanted to also call to your attention that this last fiscal year, um, June thirty, twenty nineteen, um, they moved the airport fund, the cemetery fund, and the and the aquatic fund, which used to be separate, separate special revenue funds, they moved them all over into the general fund. We just wanted to um point that out to you. And the result of these transfers of these funds resulted uh as an increase in fund balance for the general fund of a hundred and nine thousand at the beginning of the year. So these next few graphs we're going to go over just basically gives you an idea of the trend of what's been happening in the these um major funds over the last five years. It just gives you a good idea of what's been happening over over um the last five years and um kind of gives some good information. And so this graph here is talking, is referring to the general fund and the balance sheet activity within the general fund. Uh, the top line represents assets, the middle line is your fund balance, and the bottom line is your liabilities. And as you can tell, they have a significant increase, especially over the last four years. And this shows a a very good positive trend for the city. This um graph represents your cash balance in the general fund. And as you can tell here as well, um, a very good positive trend for cash as well in in the general fund. Um, the top line is unrestricted cash, and the bottom line is restricted cash, which restricted cashes remain relatively the same, decreased a little bit this last year. Overall, cash is very healthy. And as in the general fund, the revenues and expenditure trend continue to increase, with this last year increasing quite a bit. The top line is your revenues, and the bottom line is your expenses. Um, the main reason for the large increase this last year in fiscal year twenty nineteen is due to uh the airport grant. And um, that was significant increase in revenues as well as your city sales taxes. And expenditures also increased as well, and that's a result of the airport um expenditures for the for the new uh improvement on the runway. So this graph just kind of gives you an idea of what your sales tax revenues have done over the last five years. As you can see, they in have increased significantly. And that your city sales tax are are the largest single annual source of your, of the city's revenues. And these are some other taxes the city collects. They they remain more um fairly consistent over the last five years. The top line is your franchise and vehicle tax. Uh, the middle and the line is your state sales tax, and the bottom line is the urban revenue sharing tax that the city receives. And this last graph for the general fund just kind of gives a summary of expenditures within the general fund and comparing it to last year's. Um, and it shows it by function within the general government. And as you can see, there's a significant increase in public safety. The um increase this year in expenditures in public safety was due to the um three million dollar um additional contribution that was made to PSPRS, which that helped to um reduce that net pension liability for that retirement plan. And the large increase in capital outlay is again a result of the um airport improvement rehabilitation that was done on the runway this last year. So we're going to move on now to the highway user revenue fund. This is your streets fund. And the results here consistently show the top line is expenditures, the bottom line is your revenues. And so as you can tell consistently over the last five years, your expenditures tend tend to exceed your revenues, which have required um a transfer in to help cover those expenditures. Um, I expenditures included in this fund are all your road improvements um that are done throughout the city. And the cash trend in the highway user revenue fund um is fairly consistent. A slight decrease this last year, which was basically due to some various road improvements that needed to be done. And then this this next graph is going over your water fund. And this is an enterprise fund. Uh, this fund, you would hope to have revenues exceed expenditures in this fund because it needs to be able to um accumulate funds to to cover depreciation expense and to also cover future capital requirements. And as you can tell, the top line is revenue, the bottom line is expenses. And so over the last five years, uh, the water fund has shown um a net income, which is, which is good. That's what you want to accumulate funds in in these type of enterprise funds. And the cash trend in the in the water fund is very healthy, as you can tell, it in it continues to increase. This is the wastewater fund, uh revenues and expenses. Uh, the top line at the end of twenty nineteen is expenses, the bottom line is revenues. Um, this fund is also reported on the full accrual basis as well as the water fund. And so in this fund also, you would hope to see um a net income as well to help cover future um depreciation and capital expenditures. The main reason that this fund has been experiencing a net loss over the last three years is because um it needs to cover that depreciation expense. And that's what then bringing it into um where expenses have exceeded revenues um because it needs to cover the the depreciation expense. And here's um over the last five years, the cash trend, which in, within the wastewater fund. It it's been fairly consistent over the last three years and and still is a a good, a good, healthy balance at the end of twenty nineteen. These next couple of slides will show the activity within your health insurance fund. Um, this, this will tend to fluctuate. The the net income will fluctuate within this fund depending on the activity of claims. But as you can tell, the the fund is doing well. It um continues over the last five years to have revenues exceed expenditures. And so it continues to accumulate funds necessary for future claims. The cash trend also shows you again, um, the fund continuing to increase and accumulate funds to cover any future um requirements there. So this is, continues to be a positive trend for the health insurance fund. These last couple of slides is just to give you an idea of fund balance overall, and that by each fund. And so it just shows you the general health of each fund. Um, the first bar is this last fiscal year, twenty nineteen, and the second bar is prior year, uh, twenty eighteen. And so as you can tell, a lot of funds are are consistent. Um, the general fund increased quite a bit, which we discussed prior um previously. Um, it had the eight point four million increase this last year, which increased fund balance this year. And so that's a, that continues to be a a positive trend for the city. This shows your two, the major two enterprise funds, water and wastewater. As you can tell, their fund balances are very healthy. Um, wastewater is is uh very consistent between last year, so it didn't take a significant loss. And water has improved. And this is just a last um graph that shows you in general um the actual dollar amount of fund balance for each fund. The top graph shows um this last current fiscal year, twenty nineteen, and the bottom graph is showing you prior year, twenty eighteen. So it just shows you the numbers in the different funds. You have the first one, the general fund. If you compare um the two, you can see increases overall for most of the funds. Um, and so overall, the city is doing um very well. They continue to have growth and improvement, and sales taxes continue to increase. And so that's always a a positive trend for a city. Um, I would like to offer um any que, if you have any questions, you can, yes.
Uh, you mentioned right at the beginning of your presentation that there was a one deficiency that you had found in the city of Sholo, and I never did hear what that was.
Okay, so that that deficiency was the um audit adjustments. And it's recorded in the separate findings and recommendations letter. So it's considered a significant deficiency just because of the the um material amount of the different audit adjustments that we have. And our auditing standards require that we report that as a significant deficiency when we have that kind of situation. And so that that was the the significant deficiency was the audit adjustments that we had when we came out to perform the audit.
Define adjustment.
So when we come out and we review the the balances, and if an adjustment needs to be made to a particular GL account, um, then we propose to uh management an adjustment that needs to be made, and um they approve it. And then we go ahead and make the adjustment.
Can you give us an example? Okay, I mean, you told us what it is, you give us an example so people can understand a a real-life example.
Okay, so um I'm trying to think of maybe one that occurred. But so an example would be if we are reviewing accounts payable at the end of the year and the balance in accounts payable. And if we um go through and look at invoices that were paid after fiscal year end, and we see a particular invoice that is significant, that should have been recorded in the current fiscal year but was not, then we would go to management and we would say, um, we found this significant expense that was then we would go to management and we would say, we found this significant expense that was wasn't accrued this year, but it looks like to us maybe it should be, can you take a look at it? And they'll look it over and they'll determine yes or no if it should be accrued. And so if they agree, if they agree, then we go ahead and post that adjustment and record that expense in the current year rather than in the next fiscal year.
What amount do you consider significant?
So significant in our audit, in our audit procedures, we come up with what we consider a material amount and it's based on the city's balances. And based on what we consider to be significant and what we consider to be material. If it exceeds that materiality amount, then we consider that to be significant. And we would we would approach management with that amount and that adjustment.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you you didn't give us an answer.
For which one?
Were we deficient enough that we really truly need to take a look at it? Or it's just something that you found that you wanted to list?
For the significant deficiency?
Yeah.
So I will say that most cities get this finding because typically when we come out to do an audit, typically we will find adjustments that need to be made. And so this is a typical finding that you will see in in many situations. But in in for the city of Sholo, they are doing a very good job at accounting for everything. The reason we reported it is because some of the dollar amounts of the adjustments we made were considered significant. And
But you haven't told us what that amount is that goes from moderate to significant.
Yeah, there's no like
Is there like a confidentiality here that you're afraid to say what that amount is?
Well, it it's all it's all judgment. There's no particular, you know, amount that we say, oh, okay, this is significant or this is material. It's not a set stated amount.
Well, I think we're the ones that should make the judgment as whether or not we feel it should be significant or not.
Well, it it it's all comes down to the auditing standards and and that's what we follow. And so based on our, you know, we can't come in and look at absolutely everything or that audit would cost a whole lot of money. And so we come in and we look at significant items and see if everything is reported correctly based on these materiality levels. And so when when we report something as, so there's two categories, material weakness or significant deficiency. A material weakness is a lot more is is higher, is a is a higher finding than a significant deficiency. So if that helps you in that way, it wasn't a material weakness in the city. The city does not have a material weakness. The reason it's a significant deficiency is just due to the fact that some of the dollar amounts and the total amount of audit adjustments were considered significant in our auditor's judgment.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah. Help me understand. These dollars that you're talking about. Of course, I want to hear you say they're not missing money. There were money that did not get line itemed or appropriately pigeonholed or something like that. And you'd mentioned they should have been reported in this year's budget instead of carried over or something with that. Am I getting in the ballpark?
Well, that was just that was an example of what an audit adjustment would be. The city is there, there's nothing unaccounted for within nothing significant or material unaccounted for in the financial statements. And the accounting, the finance department is doing a good job at recording everything. It's just some in this situation, if if there's a particular item that shouldn't have been recorded in one account, but should have been recorded in another account or the example I gave and when expense that needed to be accrued back into this year, that's when we would come with a an audit adjustment. And so I would never say that there's accounting not being accounted for correctly, that that's not the situation. Does that answer your question?
Have you ever come out with a report that doesn't show a deficiency?
I have.
You have?
Uh huh.
Okay.
But they are few and far between, I will tell you that.
So you're almost splitting hairs that if my wife goes and she records in our ledger that it's clothing, but I wanted it to be recorded as shoes. Then that's then we make an adjustment to do it your way according to accounting principles. But according to real life principles, we've chosen to do it this way. And but yet it's just some of those things, correct?
Yeah, just according to the the accounting rules and where to record things at and what funds and things like that.
Is there anything that we need to change though, that you would recommend change so in the future you may not find these same findings?
Well, so prior year, we we so I will say that we've reduced the audit adjustments this year from prior from fiscal year 2018. And that shows that staff is being vigilant at looking at the adjustments, trying to make the needed changes so that they don't have the adjustments this next fiscal year. And staff, I know management also contacts us when they have questions because they they do want to record things correctly. And so we advise them and help them throughout the year. And so they are vigilant at trying to continue to improve on these audit adjustments and continue to reduce them every year.
Any other questions? Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin and your team, appreciate what you guys do. Next item is a consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that needs to be polled or discussed individually? I'll go through those items. We have an approval approval of the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget calendar. We have consideration of the acceptance of East McNeil and South Central Sidewalk Improvement Project number R dash 1818. Consideration of acceptance of Sierra Vista Subdivision Roadway Reconstruction Project R O two twenty. And we have consideration of resolution R 2019 dash thirty one authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Northland Pioneer College in town of Snowflake, town of Taylor for enhanced emergency service communication. And then consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council Study Session November nineteenth and the regular meeting of November nineteenth, 2019. Is there any comments or look for a motion? The motion by councilmember Crichton, seconded by vice mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, hold in favor. Any opposed, see that pass five to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is new business, a consideration of the approval of a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 to 2025. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city Sholo is required by city code to have an approved five-year capital improvement plan, CIP. CIP is a planning tool to look five years ahead to plan and prioritize the city's needs. The program is administered by an advisory committee that consists of city staff, representatives from the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council, and also a citizen representative. Prior to the advisory committee meeting, a public notice is issued seeking recommendations for capital project requests. Every requister that provides contact information receives a written response from staff after we complete the process. The first year of the CIP 2021 includes any projects that were not funded in the fiscal year 2020 budget. The 2021 projects are the committee's top priorities. However, it is understood that all these projects cannot be funded. The budget process will determine which projects receive funding. Only projects over $50,000 are included in the CIP. Smaller projects will be accounted for in each department's operations budget. Each project listed in the CIP has a detailed capital outlay project sheet, which identifies the project, its cost, potential funding sources and a timetable. Detailed cost estimates and maps are also included with the worksheets when appropriate. Staff held preliminary meeting on October thirtieth and the advisory committee met on November fourteenth, at which time the CIP was approved by the committee. And by approved by the committee, I mean it was approved to recommend to council to approve the the CIP. Staff recommends that the council approve the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 to 2025. And a printout of the CIP is included in your package. Be glad to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
I got a question. Bill, I I've been looking through this and I was looking on the roads. And I know it's been brought up a few years in a row, but I don't see anything for road improvement from Central on Cooley to Fourth. And I know we talked about that being a one of the almost one of the worst roads in Sholo is rough and everything else.
On Cooley?
Yeah, Cooley.
Central to Fourth, I believe that is on page two of five.
I didn't see it.
It's funded this year, that's why it's not in there. On page three or four.
Fourth Avenue will relate to Cooley. Okay, so that is that, well, I looked at, I seen that one, but I didn't know if that was from Central all the way down to Fourth or just Fourth and Cooley, you know, that's just, I looked at it and just seemed, well, Fourth and Cooley, so.
I can have the city engineer answer that. He did all of the detail on that project. And I know that we're bidding the waterline work in in that street currently or very soon. So he can answer that for me.
Hi, good evening. Let me just clarify, the piece from Cooley rebuild from Central Avenue to Fourth Avenue is funded in the current year. That we're looking to do that in the spring, this summer. That's part of this budget we already have. The piece in the CIP that's labeled Fourth Avenue All In Road to Cooley, that goes north and south, not east and west. That's from Cooley, All In Road along Fourth Avenue, the main corridor to the high school.
Okay, that's so that's where the apartments are, the new apartments and all that stuff down there. Okay, all right, thank you very much for the, I appreciate that.
I just had a question on, I believe, on the park here. It's in year 2023. I would like to see if at all possible that we could move up the city park restroom remodel. We have 285,000, but as we've expanded the park and we've expanded some of the amenities over there, they're being used more. If there was any way we could, you know, have anything that doesn't fall, you know, happen or any extra funds, I would love to see that possibly moved even ahead of the Sholo Lake restrooms. I think the need of over at the park restrooms would would be, you know, a good trade off possibly. And that's on page one of five.
Page one.
In 2023, we have the bathroom remodel there. I just think the reason that it's in that year is is the project was added in the fifth year and we just keep on moving them up every year. So there's no reason why that can't be adjusted, so certainly. It's just a, you know, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I just feel that's a priority that we maybe should try to move a little quicker. Well, we spent so much money on the parks over there, restrooms are something that is very important for the park. Absolutely, we can move that up. I guess I look for recommendations from from mayor and council about what year you'd like to see that moved to. I mean, you just any place we can, if we can squeeze it in the center, the better, you know, how I feel. You know, I know there's other, you know, projects that are very important. Really, in order for that to get priority, we should just move it into next year. So the 2021, we'll go ahead and make that make that adjustment. Everybody else? Thank you. Any other questions of councilmember? Councilwoman Kukavas?
Frontier Park parking lot and amenities, can you talk about the amenities that are going in there? Anything to do with the last presentation we had four weeks ago?
Right, that's the 800,000 in your
It's a million in the CIP, but it's related to the unlimited player presentation that we're working on fundraising for that. The city, we we believe will put in this CIP 200,000 of the budget and we're trying to fundraise for the rest at this time.
Yeah, the councilmember Kelly?
Yeah. If we bring something forward a year or two, I mean, to make the same budget and work out, don't we have to drop something this year somewhere to?
This is it's really not a budget and we prioritize.
I used a bad word, thank you for the correction. What I'm saying is to make it balance, if you will, we got so much money. And if we move something forward a year or two, we need to seriously be prepared to defer something else in that same dollar amount, is this not true?
If you move something up, like the part, the restrooms, like the mayor mentioned, it could be added to next year's list. But not all items in the list are going to be funded anyway, so we'll have to prioritize those items as we do the budget. And and I think Bill said it in the in the presentation, the budgets was going to be what dictates funded, not the CIP. But these are kind of the goals for the city, try to get these funded. And they also help in the grant process that we use. Some of the grants will help that they're mentioned in the CIP.
Thank you. Any other councilwoman?
On the city campus master plan, it looks like it's phased in three phases.
It's actually, I think it's four phases, we've got funding this year. Yeah, the so the last year, we're going to add some pickleball courts. And that was something during a council presentation at the retreat.
The planning or the master planning, it's actually
Oh, no, it's that's actual projects. That's yeah, that's actual improvements. This year's improvement is the roof on the two brick buildings there. The next year, and and I'm just going by memory, it's it's in here, but I think the next year is the parking lot. We're gonna, we're gonna demolish some buildings and do some other improvements. So there's a pretty detailed plan and that was, like I said, that was part of a presentation that we did at council retreat. I think that would be better worded, you know, city campus master plan improvements or something, so we know we're doing Okay, yeah, so it is improvements. Instead of just a planning, you know, possibly add improvements. Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? I'll look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to approve five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 to 2025 for the city of Sholo.
Okay, the motions are second, second by councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, do that pass five to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is item eight B, a consideration of adoption of resolution number 2019 dash thirty two, adopting new fee schedule for Sholo Family Aquatic Center and establishing an effective date. Mr. Brimhall?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending fee changes at the Sholo Family Aquatic Center to reduce the general fund subsidy of the facility. Rates were last changed in 2008 and staff believes that the requested increase will in fees will help recover some of the increased costs at the aquatic center. The proposed changes in this resolution put the Sholo Family Aquatic Center in the mid-range price for most fees in the state benchmark benchmarking group. Roughly 90% of the aquatic center users are daily fee customers. After internal discussion and input from city council at the retreat on October 11th, 2019 regarding these fees, many less utilized and bulk fees will remain the same in order to help customers save. The attached comparative chart shows the proposed changes to the current fee schedule. The changes are reflected in the resolution and all half-year and yearly past prices will remain the same in this proposal in an attempt to encourage their use. Staff will honor punch passes purchased before the increase is implemented and all fees will become active or effective rather on January 6th, 2020. And staff proposes a review of these fees every five years. I'm available for questions if there are any.
Any questions? Councilwoman Kukavas? Councilwoman Kukavas?
Who determines a senior?
Oh, they've got their policy. I believe it's 55 and above, I believe, don't quote me on that. That's a pretty important question, though.
Any other question or comments? I just encourage you to follow up with these fees every five years. You know, I know we've, we had a little gap, I think 2008 was our last increase, so it's like 11 years we possibly can get behind, although we increase if we're late increasing that, just cost revenue, so.
I'll put it in my calendar, mayor.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other questions or discussions? Look for a motion? That's woman Kukavas?
I move to adopt resolution number R2019-32, adopting a new fee schedule for the Sholo Family Aquatic Center and establishing an effective date.
There's a motion second by council vice mayor. Any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, you know me, I can't help myself, okay? I would direct your attention from the bottom of this back page to the written report. If you move upward, the fourth fee is $85, and that's for three or more family members. Okay? Two family members is 50. Stay with me. That would be $25 apiece. But the third one, we're going to hit them $35. And then, from then on, it's the same. Right, 85 bucks. It just seems like that third person, a family of three, gets hit quite a bit harder. It, I don't, it seems like if we went $25 a person for two family members, make it eight, 75 for three, and 85 for four or more. We're hitting that third person extra hard. I just question that.
Yeah.
You follow me?
I do.
I mean, it.
That sounds reasonable.
There could be a real good reason why the committee did that, but I wasn't in the committee, I don't know.
I guess I don't understand what the swim team is, it's forming a team.
Yeah, it's a swim team that has meets. It's much more popular during the summertime. We're not trying to discourage people, but there is an increased use during that time, and the swim team is bigger, which requires a little bit more staff during the summer.
So with that same rationale, you almost have to look at the one below it for the summer.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's similar, yes.
But, but the three or more, they could have five or six and really reduce it. So we kind of discourage just the two-man team versus a four-man team.
Well, it's not really a team.
Well, just a family with more participants than.
I see Gene's point.
They could do two family members and a child and get, get a 35.
We want a D and M for not having four kids.
All right.
Five or eight, you know.
I think that's a good point, but that's been the fee all along since 2008. And, but we can, we can make that change if the council wants to.
Well, it just, well, it doesn't make sense.
It does make sense.
It does?
What you're saying makes sense, yes.
Okay.
Does the motion maker wish to change the motion with the?
I would amend my motion to make the changes on the rate schedule.
The swim team rate?
For swim team.
And review this rate schedule.
I think we wanted 85 for winter for four or more family members. Three family members, it would be 75. Is that correct, Gene?
Well, that's in line with, it's, it's not discounting for numbers like the rest of the schedule does, and you have the same scenario in the one right below it. A two or 85, who's got the calculator handy? You know, so, you know, that if you take the price per one, then add that much more for the third, and then take it to 125 for four or more.
Well, and the summer one actually gives them a better discount.
It's, it works for the summer by $2.50.
Yes, the summer's fine, I guess, when you look at the values there.
On the swim team winter rates, I would change it to $75 for three member, family members, and 85 for four or more family members.
Can I suggest that somebody go away and put together a plan and come back to us or something? Because we're trying to make changes on the, on the fly here.
I think you're making that one change that's been specified on the winter swim team.
Okay.
And we can do, you can do that by your motion.
Okay.
Mike, will you?
I'll do my second.
Do your second, redo your second. Okay, do we, you want to restate your motion, councilwoman Kukavas, please? Or your modification, just restate your modification, so it's.
I move to approve the resolution number, what was it? Where was my paper?
R2019-32.
2019-30 with the amendment on the fee rate, fee schedule of, for winter swim team, $30 per child, $50 for, actually, it should be $25 per child, $50 for two family members, 75 for three family members, and 85 for more family members.
We have a motion second. Vice mayor, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Do that pass five to zero. We do fight for individual family members, saving them $10, so. Next item is a preliminary development plan for the hollows. Mr. Trugaskis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if I'm alarmed or not that a senior is considered to be age 55. It's much closer to my age than I'm prepared to accept at this point. At its November 26th, 2019 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero. Two commissioners absent. Recommend approval of a preliminary development plan submitted by Scott and Heather Martenson for a three-lot subdivision called the Hollows located within Bison Crossing. The applicants have indicated this subdivision will be for single-family homes. Manufactured homes prohibited. Lot number three will consist of a private showroom and sales office, which will be converted to a single-family home in the future. The gross area of the proposed subdivision is approximately 10.6 acres, with a minimum lot size of 1.13 acres, an average lot size of 3.49 acres, and a maximum lot size of 8.01 acres. This development is owned planned unit development and is part of the Bison Crossing development. Previously submitted final development plan called Bison Hollow Preserve Villas, the village at Bison Crossing, was approved by the city council on November 6th of 2007. That final development plan was never recorded with the county and has expired. The Hollows is located within a portion of this previously approved preliminary development plan for the hollow at Bison Crossing. This portion originally called for a 13-lot subdivision with a commercial component. The new preliminary development plan for the Hollows will replace that with three lots and no commercial component. Staff has reviewed this submittal and has found that it meets the requirements of city code and the underlying PUD zoning. The conditions of approval as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission are, number one, all developments shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements. Number two, public sewer and water lines within the development shall have dedicated public easements. Number three, drainage ways including basins and culverts shall be designated as private drainage easement. And number four, all development of the Hollows shall be in substantial conformance to the submitted preliminary development plan deed restrictions and Bison Crossing master plan. What I'd like to do now is take just a couple moments and kind of walk through some of the slides that we have that will show the subject property as well as the lots that are being proposed, and then also how this ties in with what was previously approved by the council back in 2007. So you can see here on the aerial, we have the subject property outlined in red. This is a portion of Bison Crossing. The area outlined in red would be what is proposed to consist of the newly submitted development called the Hollows. You can see it, a butts, a public street there on the north. That public street is eventually intended as a requirement of the zoning and the Bison master plan to extend and tie in up to Oldland Road at approximately the 18th Avenue location intersection. You see people kind of pulled off the road right there. Currently, they like to go hiking, walk their dogs back in that area. That's about where that road would come out. That portion of the development is also slated for a public trail, which currently consists of a sidewalk. That sidewalk has been partially completed in the areas that have been developed. So just to the west of the proposed development, we have what is the restaurant slash clubhouse area. There is a sidewalk in place there along the front of this proposed development. And then to the north, also along the, the public street there. Got it there, just as a black and white subject property map for you. Just also kind of stands out. Again, this is Clark Road. We can see Bison Parkway that comes in off of Clark Road. This would be where the restaurant and clubhouse area is currently. Then we've got the proposed subdivision coming directly off of the south there. This is the submitted preliminary development plan for the Hollows. Again, you can see the overall area is outlined in black. That is, consists of three lots. Now, to be honest, it's a little bit hard to discern and to tell where those lots are within that. So we went ahead and outlined the, each lot in red. You can see lot number one, lot number two, which is the largest lot, which extends from that public street all the way down to Clark Road, and then lot number three, where it's proposed that they'll do the sales office and display center. Moving forward, this was the original preliminary development plan as approved in 2007. It was for three different developments. Bison Hollow at Bison Crossing, Preserve Villas at Bison Crossing, and the village at Bison Crossing. A very large commercial component was envisioned for that. That portion of the project has not been developed and is currently vacant. We can again see kind of where the clubhouse is, and then we can see some lots here. And then over here, and I'll show you on the next slide, this map is oriented not north to the top, as most maps are. North is on the side. But you can see this area here that I'm circling with the cursor, that is the area that we're proposing, that is under consideration this evening. That originally had 13 lots and a commercial component that was part of that. They are no longer proposing to have 13 lots. They are now proposing three lots with basically no commercial component once that sales office and display center converts to residential. This is zoomed in a little bit closer. Again, you can see the 13 lots there, the area under consideration. And then just to kind of be a little bit more consistent, don't try to read it because everything's written sideways. I spun it so that it's the same orientation as what you'll see on the aerial and what you see on the other maps. So you can see the, again, what was proposed for the 13 lots is now being proposed for the three lots. With that, myself, as well as a representative of the applicant are available for questions. And I can certainly cycle through these slides if there's ones that you want to refer to.
Thank you. Any questions, councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, if the applicant would care to, I'm not trying to say I'm making this a requirement, but it's a mystery to me why, what would be the motive of reducing the density to this extent? Would you care to share?
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Gary Martenson, 720 North Retreat Way. So the answer, Kelly, was that, you know, that, that particular subdivision of 10.6 acres would have been a very expensive subdivision to develop even back then. All the lots, for the most part, were in the hillside, so they were difficult lots to build on. I had a time when you probably could justify the higher costs and not only in subdivision improvements, but also in the housing. So when we had the opportunity to repurchase, as we have others, this particular parcel, it seemed to be a, a good location for a, more of a small lot. And in this case, maybe being perceived kind of as, as a, a family development. And as most people in the city of Sholo would want to be as close to Buffalo Bills as possible, this one is certainly is, so that's really, and most of the, the extension of the utilities would be, would be expensive.
Thank you, I was just curious.
So there's no other improvements that you have to put in because the infrastructure's already in there, is that correct?
No.
Public improvements?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, you know, we're actually putting in kind of a half cul-de-sac there, a knuckle in to, to be able to bring the frontage for all three lots to comply with zoning.
Okay, see. Any other questions, vice mayor?
Yeah, I got a question. On lot two, as long as it is and everything else, are you going to try to do anything onto Highway 260? Or are you just going to leave that fenced off where you can't get up that way?
No, we have no intentions of trying to access Highway 260.
Any other questions, comments? Look for a motion? Councilmember Crennton?
I move to approve the preliminary development plan for the Hollows at Bison Crossing, subject to the conditions of approval as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
A motion, I have a second by councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Do that pass five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trugaskis.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Next item we have is summary of current events. I look to councilmembers for a current event. Vice mayor?
Thank you, mayor. Just to have a couple, had the privilege and the honor last Wednesday to serve seniors and people throughout the whole city at the Thanksgiving luncheon at the, at the senior center. And I want to thank the mayor and staff, city manager, and, and other people that came from the city to join and contribute to the senior center. I definitely appreciate that. I want to also thank the FBLA kids from the Sholo High School that helped serve meals that day. They had a great time and, and went back to school and tell them how, how much fun it was to serve people and, and the gratitude that they got for doing that. So I definitely want to thank them for that. Also, went to the community fast. I was surprised when I went there because I, I thought that that would be a place where you just sit there and say, this is how much money we raise, and this is where it's going to go out. And when I got there and seen the performances and everything else, it was like, man, this is great, I really liked it. It was, it was, it was a fun time, and the people there was having a good time. All the different churches there and, and coming together and worshiping and, and singing and just having a great time, and the mayor getting up and making everybody cry. It's, you know, he's just the typical thing that he always does here for a lady. So, but it was a great time that had by all that was there. And so if you would like to participate in that community fast next year, I highly suggest you go to the, to the last night and listen to what's going on and, and how well it serves the city of Sholo. And the last thing I want to say is, and we said it very beginning with all our prayers and everything else for the Rawlings and Willa, we also had over 20 employees go down there today from the city of Sholo to help. And that's not just employees, but management and, and other people. So I want to thank Public Works for, and the people that did go down there today and, and this last week to serve, I just want to thank them for their time. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, vice mayor. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I would like to say that the program for the community fast was indeed fabulous. And I've already complimented the mayor personally, and I would like to do it publicly. His remarks at the end of the program, and I. His remarks at the end of the program, and I said this to him, is, I'm glad there wasn't a speaker following him because it would have not been fun. I wouldn't have wanted to be one. And they put him at the end of the program. You can be proud of, uh, your mayor and his ability to communicate and challenge this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
I think that was well said and, uh, so I won't expand on that very much. We very much appreciate you, Mayor. Thank you for your remarks at the beginning. Um, I too want to express my gratitude to our communities, our White Mountain communities for the outreach of love and, and compassion for our community families. Um, there's a number of people that lost loved ones this last weekend and, and the Rawlings, the Tennies, the McSummerys, the Luntz. So we want you to know that we care for you and our communities love you and we support you and please continue to pray for these people. They need our, our help.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukavas. I just want to give, uh, some announcements if I can here. The funeral service for Austin Rawlings will be held Friday, uh, December the 6th at 2:00 PM at Christ Church of the Valley. That's at 707 West Happy Valley Road in Peoria. Also, the funeral services for Randy Kenny will be Saturday, 11:00 AM at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Steak Center here in Cholo, Arizona. Uh, I just, I'm grateful for people in this community and being that this is our one and only meeting for December. I just wish the citizens of our community a very Merry Christmas and hope that you have a fantastic, uh, New Year and may we find joy in peace and love and prosperity as we serve and as we care for one another. Thank you. And I want to express my thanks to my council members and for their love, their service and their devotion as well and their families who allow them to serve. Thank you, one of you.
Thank you.
Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to report. The Christmas lights and holiday decorations are on, in full display for the Cholo signs, Cholo signs for the holidays. We have several family-friendly events. We just want to mention since, as has been mentioned, this is the last, only meeting we have in December. This Saturday evening, December 7th, will be our annual light, Christmas light parade and tree lighting ceremony. The parade begins at 6:00 PM and starting at Central Avenue and proceeding down the Deuce Clubs. They'll then have a brief tree lighting ceremony at 7:00 PM in front of the public library and the parade winners will be announced at that time. Second, there will be a flashlight candy cane hunt that will be held at Senior Field on, at the city park on Wednesday, December 11th for kids ages 12 and under. The cost is $5 per person and for more information, the number is 532-4130. The second Main Street Center and the shops at Gingerbread, Gingerbread Lane this year will be held December 13th through 15th. That's Friday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the City Campus Gym, 620 East McNeil. And that's, again, that's a Main Street activity, 532-2680 for information on that. The library, uh, will present a Polar Express night featuring the reading of a classic children's book by Cholo Police Chief Joe Shelley and Timber Mesa Fire Chief Brian Savage with a visit from Santa on Friday, December 20th. Three half-hour sessions for reading are scheduled at 6:15, 6:45 and 7:15. Tickets are available at the library on first come, first served basis and are required for everyone who plans to attend and there's approximately 100 or 100 tickets available for each session. And the library's number is 532-4070 for more information on that one. And finally, the final event for the year is the Deuce Clubs drop on New, New Year's Eve, December 31st, and that's going to be moved this year. It'll be here in, in front of the public library. The festivities begin at 11:00 PM, following by the dropping of the, um, Deuce Clubs card and fireworks at midnight. A reminder that the aquatic center is closed for annual maintenance and will reopen to the public on Monday, December 16th. And, uh, the community fast has been mentioned, it ended last week, but donations will be accepted through the month, they're accepted all year round, but where this city hall is still accepting donations and the, all the banks in Cholo are also accepting donations for that. Yeah, and just, just a reminder, over this year, over $21,500 was raised in, in the community fast and will be distributed to needy families and children in this Christmas season. After holiday, after the holidays, we have a Christmas tree recycling program from Thursday, December 26th through Sunday, January 5th at the Frontier Park parking lot on the north of the Deuce Clubs on Ninth Place. The trees will then be taken to Noble Power and Snowflake and used as biomass fu- fuel. Just a reminder, all the decoration lights need to be removed from the trees before you drop them off. And as has been mentioned, this is the last council meeting of the year, so we wish everyone a Merry Christmas and safe and happy holidays. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM, 2020.
2020. We made it. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. This time we, uh, need a motion to move into executive session where we'll discuss an agreement for acquisition of AP numbers 2010-16-048C and 8D and 2010-16-039. A motion, uh, by Vice Mayor, second by Councilmember Kelly. All those in favor? Any opposed? This time we move into executive session. Thank you for being here, for those who attended tonight. Appreciate it.
Oh, sure. You get it.